See if we're.
How would we, how would we find out in advance before we make this?
He should have come into us to show us he, he was supposed to put that to the side of his building, his trailer.
Guess we can table it. I don't want to vote on it. We can actually vote on it.
Could have actually responded to the message that I sent him, I sent him too. I mean, I'd have told him that he didn't respond back, so.
Just a little hesitant to go on file and say we're not approving if it's not in our prerogative today.
Thursday after he came to meeting, we, we told him that no, it would not be there. And it's like, I guess, well, just what to him. And when I walked by there, I drove by there the other day, I was wondering what he was doing with it. You know, there were six in the front where we told him to move it. He wants to play the game, then you know, we can take his lease from him.
So we didn't. You're like.
Now, when it starts coming into the meeting.
So we held, but we held it to start for you.
He did come in here and cause it basically.
When they start coming into the meetings, are we supposed to stand when he walks in?
I'm supposed to stand as if we're having meetings?
Just whenever we get to that point, advise me if we want to move forward, if you want to table it, if we need further information to look at. Other than that, everybody kind of sort of maybe ready? Ray, are you ready? Okay, it is, uh, six oh five, I may be calling the town of Linville, Linville Town Council. Meeting to order. Before we do that, do we want to do this appropriation, community?
Public hearing, yeah.
Public hearing. And I should have that first, so I guess I'm not calling just to worry you, I'm going to read the, appropriation for community cross grant. Notice taxpayers additional appropriation, this is given to taxpayers, town of Linville, Ward County, you know, the town of Linville Town Council will meet at two oh seven Main Street, Linville, Indiana. For citizens, it's one nine at six P M. Look upon on nine sixteen twenty twenty five for the purpose considering following additional appropriation. Which the town considers necessary for the town's responsibility of the opening, repair and maintenance of towns, local roads and streets with community crossing grant. M V H. We're asking for the appropriation twenty thousand dollars. L R S thirty five thousand, M V H forty five thousand. Public Improvement Projects one hundred thousand, total appropriation of one hundred thousand. Act payers appearing at the meeting show the right to be heard. Additional appropriations is finally made will be referenced in the Department of Local Government Finance. Linville Town Council will make a written combination of sufficiency of the funds to support the appropriation. Within ten days or receipt of certified copy of the action statement dated sixteenth of September twenty twenty five. If anybody wants to speak towards that. If any council members have anything. Then that will conclude the public hearing. Six oh six. Now we will call the meeting to order the Linville Town Council. Stand in Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Brian Cook. Mike Mitchell. Michael May. Chris Wisher.
Here.
Lori Stokis. Rachel Titzer.
Present.
Doris Horn. Dave Goldenberg, present. At least I didn't say the six oh seven. These are time. Approval of minutes, we have had a slew of minutes tabled. I worked with Lori. One evening this last week, we got them all corrected and entered the way that I believe they should be. And that we went ahead and eat, Lori emailed them to both or all of us for review. So now I'd like to see if, get those minutes approved so we can get them off this table list. If I can have some motions to approve. The July first minutes.
I make a motion to approve July first, twenty twenty five.
And I will second that motion. Motion made by Rachel, seconded by Dave on favor. Doris will be. Recused. July sixteenth minutes.
I make a motion to approve July sixteenth, then it's twenty twenty five.
I'll second that motion. That was the twelve thing.
That's July the sixteen, twenty twenty four, sorry.
Twenty, yeah, that was twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
Yes. I've got a first and a second by Doris on favor.
Aye.
July fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
I make motion to approve July fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
Motion made by Rachel, seconded by, you weren't here, seconded by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Doris is recused. July twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
Make a motion to approve July the twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
Motion made by Rachel. You weren't here again, seconded by David on favor.
Aye.
Again, Doris is recused. August fifth, twenty twenty five.
I make the motion to approve August fifth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Doris, seconded by Rachel on favor.
Aye.
Motion's approved. April sixteenth, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion to approve April sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Doris, seconded by Rachel on favor.
Aye.
Motion passes. And. We have minutes for August nineteenth.
Yeah, we have them all.
Most were on that email list too, weren't they? Okay.
Yeah.
I need a motion to approve the minutes for August nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve August nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
Motion by Doris, seconded by Rachel on favor.
Aye.
September second, twenty twenty five.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from September the second, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
Made by Doris, seconded by Rachel on favor. Aye. Finally, all our minutes are up to date. Thank you. Thank you, Lori, for working with me that night, bringing them up to where we needed. Approval of current bills, September second, twenty twenty five through September sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll make the motion to approve the current bills from September the second, twenty twenty five through September the sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
Motion by Doris, seconded by Rachel on favor.
Aye.
Motion passes. Treasury report, general operating forty one thousand eight hundred and eighty two dollars and twenty one cents. M V H six hundred and sixty two thousand, six hundred and twenty eight dollars and seventy seven cents. Lit eighty seven thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty six cents. Public safety, one hundred and thirty seven thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety nine cents. Public improvements, thirty thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and seventy five cents. Eighteen eighty two venue showing a negative twenty five dollars and thirty one cents. Community center, four thousand, twelve dollars and thirteen cents. Fire department, two hundred and forty two thousand, six hundred and fifty six dollars and twenty six cents. Park, one hundred and forty six thousand, one hundred and fifty five dollars and three cents. Utilities operating, we're showing a negative balance of twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty one dollars and thirty five cents. Opioid settlement, thirty six, three thousand, six hundred and twenty nine dollars and twenty cents. The Cincy Trail, ninety seven thousand, six hundred and sixty five dollars and seventy nine cents. Questions?
I'd like to make comment, the, uh, eighteen eighty two venue, it's, uh, the deposit just didn't come back from the bank, there is, it is not in the negative.
And so that will be reflected on the next report.
Yeah. And later on in the meeting.
Budget status, saying anything about that, submitted. Right, come on. Project funding report. And it's also been submitted.
Yes.
On Main Street, project bond requisitions, we've got this in here. We're up to date with that now. We still need to take that now in front of the. Development. Mission board, I have them approved it. Has anybody got any questions on those within the bonds before we call? A meeting to get, to get them approved.
I'll have to look over it, cause I, I mean, if it's been updated. I have. Not.
But why, why don't you take a couple of days, if you can, and look over it, let me know. If there's no questions about anything on it, then we'll go ahead and. Put notice out for a, a board meeting and present that to them for approval. If there's something in there that we need to talk about before any, we need to add that to the agenda next time, I guess. When's that date that we have to clear out the, on, it's coming up? We have to report what we spent this year. Okay, so we've got, okay. Oh, Brian Cook's not here, he submitted some, uh, work orders, reports, we can review. He's got it on here, water power maintenance. Which.
I know.
Like I have Ryan to speak towards that, still a minute, but it's something that we're gonna have to do. Have we given? Any approvals at this point to move forward with that project?
Not that I'm aware of. We just talked about it, it's gonna be coming up. That's as far as we went, as far as I remember.
Is it appropriated in the budget, Lauren?
Nope.
I mean, it's, might have to put it off a little bit then, so.
Didn't you have a? I see they had a. I guess we'll put that off and we'll ask Brian to come to the next board meeting, council meeting. Uh, to make a presentation, we need to know what his recommendations are, move forward. Uh, I know it's a cost thing. I understand that, it's also a cost factor if we don't do it. So we gotta look and see which ways we'll move forward. Aaron, uh, he called, he couldn't be here tonight. End dot reimbursements, I think there's a fifty two thou, fifty two thousand dollar end dot reimbursement we're still looking for.
Fifty two thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy six cents. Actually, and then there's two other ones I added after that, but I gave that to Aaron and I haven't heard anything that.
I'm, I'm going to meet with Aaron tomorrow morning. Talk about a road in town, so we will. Try to see where we stand on that and see if he's filed those yet, has, do you know if he's filed them?
I do not know, um, I know that I filed them twice, didn't get anywhere, which it was the same way with the first one, it took months to get. And I just gave it all to him and asked him to finish it up because I couldn't get anywhere with them. There are, since the last, since that paperwork was filled out, there were two other charges. We added to it. So I can redo it or.
So it's now over fifty two thousand?
Well, it's right at, right under fifty three, and the other two charges are a hundred fifty seven dollars and three hundred and twelve dollars.
G I S implementation, we've been trying to get quotes on that, and. I don't think we can move forward without Brian making your recommendation. Anybody have any issues with that? He's gonna have to come to a meeting.
Yes.
Capital improvements, basically the same way, we cannot make. Judgment calls on what we need to do without his input. So we need to make sure, I will make sure that he's at the next meeting. I don't see any reason to call any special meetings for those at this point, does anybody?
Those that be here, so we pick the information.
Okay, Mike Mitchell's not here. Michael May.
I'm here. I'm here, Chief of Linville Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, since the last time I was here, we've had thirteen runs, we, uh, we're in full gear mode for open house, cause that's this next month. We have started selling our gun, raffle tickets, the way I hear, it's doing pretty good, I can't seem to sell one for some reason, but, uh, and then I was gonna see if with that, if we could put fires in the water bill like we always do. The flyers, flyers, open house, sorry, my voice is hoarse.
Uh, we, we don't do our own billing anymore.
Well, that sucks.
But I can do a, a printout of all addresses. Like stickers, so you just, stickers.
I'll talk to you about it later, we'll see, we'll see. Burn chamber is in place. Uh, we got to, we got to do work and stuff to it. We will be working on it sooner than later. Uh, I have been called by the same people that gave us the burn chamber with the state. They are wanting to know if we could be the help home for a. Fire training trailer free of charge. It's like a sixteen foot enclosed trailer that has multiple training. Props in it. They're really happy with everything we're doing and that's why they've offered this to us, I told them, I'll talk to you guys about it before I said, yeah. I believe we can hold it behind the station up against our other enclosed trailer. Or. I'm up with a different place for it, but. I was wondering, you guys' thoughts on that?
Um, to me, as long as you've got a place to put it, you know?
Yeah. I, I don't see why we couldn't put it back there, but if something. Comes up or whatever, we can try to find a different home for it. So now. We have that burn chamber out there, if worse comes to worst, we might be able to put more rock there and just park it beside it, or. That, that's about the only other option, other than keeping it at somebody's house, which I don't want to do that. So. That's leaving that one, you guys. Or if you guys won't make it a pull it, you're wrong getting that trailer.
I would prefer to go on the lay down yard myself, so that the community center parking lot's not so, it's just not so congested there with, you know, things, I mean. Um, I hear that. And I mean, it appears that we have room on the lay down yard for it, so. As long as Brian is fine with that, I don't have an issue with it going there.
Yeah, I talked to Brian. Where we put our burn chamber, that lock right there beside the sewer plant, where the shop is. Well, the academy is going strong, it's doing very, very well. Uh, we had four people drop out the first day because they figured out that they couldn't make it and we had four people in there. By the next one to replace them. So, that's doing great. Uh, I talked to you earlier about the, uh, fence around the dumpster, uh, Obie. Obadiah said that he will do it. He goes, I don't know the price off hand or whatever, but. He said that he would do it and he said he should have it done within two weeks. I told him, just do whatever has to be done, make it right. We'll go from there. We've gotten a new guy. He came and joined us the other day, and I put him straight into that class, so he's already trained. We have our budget done, I believe. Give it to Lori, if you guys don't look at it. Up to, uh, but I'm gonna give it to Lori so she can put it in the computer, uh, if I need to email it or anything, I will as well. And that's. All I think I have. Oh, uh, the parade, what's the plan this year for that? Oh, yeah, I, I didn't know if we're gonna go just on the same plans of us making the chili and stuff and then doing the organizing up there or what, I'm already getting questions about what the theme and stuff is and. Reminding people in the community, so I didn't know if you guys.
Are you guys willing to?
Yeah, I, I think everybody's good enough spirits to make it happen, so.
So that would be November the thirtieth?
Yeah, that's that weekend after Thanksgiving, right?
November the thirtieth. Is it? One o'clock? Or is it two o'clock? I don't remember what. I'll have to look the timer.
Okay. And do you know the theme on that? We got one picked.
Lori, had we previously picked the theme, because I, I've already been asked once this week, um, I could not remember if we had established.
But who asked you is probably who asked me to. Yes.
It was either Christmas songs or Christmas movies, I can't remember.
Christmas something, gotcha.
Yeah, it was either Christmas, I think it was Christmas songs. This year, cause I think we did movies before.
We already did movies.
So I think it's songs this, this time.
Okay.
Christmas song, Christmas song, alright.
Uh, I think that's all I got.
I have a question for you too, do you have two, do you have any tickets that I can have?
You know, I asked that.
See if my husband can take them or.
No, you just take those, uh, there, there should be fifty of them in there. If you sell, if you wanna sell more or whatever, just let me know.
The concrete, there's that hole that's in the, you look walking on, when you come in. Concrete is, is working away, it's making a hole.
Where's that at?
And you're going, uh, and you're coming in from sixty, and you go down, it's just a little, you know, when you go down, there's a little hole starting with the concrete.
Okay, I guess I haven't paid attention to it.
Uh, that needs to be, really needs to be addressed, cause I know that when we, when it was built, we was gonna do just, uh, like a white comp and we knew that that wouldn't hold up. There would, would weigh in the trucks and stuff, but we went up the concrete and so just driving around, I seen it and I'm thinking we need to do something before it gets bad.
Yeah, I, I haven't noticed it, but if it's something small, I'll probably do it myself.
I would, I would, I would appreciate you looking and getting that fixed. Cause you know, but his favorite concrete cost big.
Yeah, so if it's something small, I'm allowed to just fix that. Yeah, I'm, I was a concrete finisher for a long time, like I can.
Okay.
Yeah, jack of all trades, master of nothing.
Yeah, do you know if anybody, you mentioned maybe the Christmas, Mr. and Mrs. Santa suits are? Have you seen them? We can't find Santa suits, we didn't know, maybe they're gonna, we just don't know where they are.
Oh, we, as far as I know, we, we've not ever had those in our possession.
Cause can't find them. Okay, but that's all of them, I would try to sell these and that's prayed down and the thing. And you guys are gonna do the chili.
Yep. Yeah, the guys, they actually look forward to the chili part of it, they all make their own creations, I don't know, but. I, we're, we're so good on our gaming license stuff, right? That's what I.
We'll get, we'll even get it filed, but.
I was gonna say, if not, we, we started selling this week, so. And with that, the firefighters are not in on the gun raffle this time, but I did make it to where the top seller gets like a two hundred dollar Visa. And the second seller gets a hundred dollars, so. So there's incentive to sell there. I think right now I got a high school kid blowing everybody else out of the water. All right, you guys have anything else for me?
Michael, thank you.
Glad you know if the budget isn't right, that's the first one that we personally filled out, so. I'm not saying it's perfect. We tried.
Okay. Residential business, couple things, we've got. A request to cut down a dead tree. From Jamie Lee, one on seven Violet Lane, pictures included. Yeah, I guess several trees. We, Brian, she wants to take down. And it's such a procedure right now, but we've got to make a motion to let her do that. And then I'll talk about that after we do that, if it's okay with everyone.
Um, that's a motion to allow Jamie Lee to remove, please, one on seven Violet Lane.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Doris, seconded by Rachel on favor.
Aye.
Now, as we move forward with trees. I'm guess, I'm, I'm asking the question, why do we bring it to the council for approval? If it's a dead tree, can we have them just take pictures and send it in? And we can just, hey, okay, it's, it doesn't have to go through a council meeting? Are there any issues with that?
I think in order to okay it, it has to. Be approved by the council though. And, I mean.
It's our property and what they were doing. That.
I'm, I'm just trying to make it faster for the, the homeowners out there, so they don't have to wait two weeks.
Well, they just. They were taking down trees, just starting, they were just starting cutting, clearing out patches and stuff and it's like, we just.
Thousand, thousand dollars a tree or so, I just don't see them doing that.
Well, they did it many years ago, you know?
So you, you wanna continue the process of making them come to town council or sending information?
I do, because that way we know what's going on in the parks.
And it's fine.
I mean, and that is the documentation that it was approved by the council. Going through the meeting.
We're looking for the sign. There's, I mean, it's in the lease that just requires written approval. From the count, from the lessor, which is the town, but there is a provision for emergency. Um, except the cutting, cutting down any tree necessary to prevent immediate damage to property. So if there's a dead tree that's gonna fall, I mean, they can presumably cut it down. But sure, the only other thing you could do is to authorize somebody like the town manager or somebody to make the decision, but. Yeah, well, I, I don't think that's what they wanna do at this point. So we'll just continue like it is. Okay, uh, request of powers. And. That's one. We've got a question on Chris. Yes, it's approved by.
The lease requires.
Area planning, but not by us. Re- lease requires approval. Lessor's approval, which is the town, work county plant commission approval, and then. Provide plant commission approval to lessor for final approval. So presumably they come here, then they go there, then they come back here. And then they came here and. Oh, not to do what they've done. I mean, that would be, so ultimately it's subject to the council's approval. And plant commission checks to make sure it meets all those zoning codes, but still requires council approval for the. Council. Told him that they did, that he, that they did not want it at that location. So correct?
That's correct. Uh, you know, we wanted on record that when he was in, they were in here. That they were told what to do as far as going down to the planning commission, doing all the paperwork done. And that he was not gonna have it in the front of his trailer, that it was to be set to the side.
I'm.
And now here he is, he's got, he's playing with it right in front of the, the trailer and I.
And I'd like. There we go. I'd like to have that motion to deny it, uh, not based off area planning, but based off of. Uh, Lindell Town Council's request not to. Have the building on the side of the front side of the.
Yes.
Structure. It's kind of what you said, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Seconded by Rachel. On favor.
Aye.
Hey, that motion, the motion to deny. Oh, what else have we got here? We talked about those things. These things. Need a breakfast profit at eighteen eighty-two fundraiser for six forty-one twenty-five. Uh, decision on resolution. I guess we need to vote now on that resolution. Twenty twenty-five dash three, the appropriations. CMJ, and you need a motion. To, uh, accept. The additional appropriation, revolution twenty twenty-five dash two.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash two additional appropriations for two hundred thousand dollars.
I will second that motion.
She's been made and seconded on favor.
Aye.
Uh, BCS services for the, uh. Special meeting. Just telling you that we spent nineteen hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents to make that work. Uh, number four is eighteen eighty-two venue porch.
Um, before you go too much further, uh, we skipped a little bit at the front or the top. Um, the dates changed for the twenty twenty-six budget public hearing.
Yeah.
Till October seventh and adoption twenty seventh.
Okay.
Um, instead of it being today, it was a problem. With gateway. Um.
Yeah, that wasn't our changing, it was their changing.
Kind of. It was, I should have gone back and checked. I hit submit and only some, uh, uploaded about half of it. I wasn't the only one that did it. It was a quite few of us. And then clicked out of it. Well, now you have to hit submit and stay there till you get your submission.
Okay, so you're gonna have to optimize that?
It's already done. Everything's already.
Done with the right date now. We're just making note that.
Yep.
Just making note, October twenty-seventh, October seven.
Yes. And then just a reminder that October twenty-first, I switched to October twenty-seventh for the pub, for the town council meeting.
We made that.
Yeah. It's twenty-seven.
Right.
It's.
Venue porch roof. Looks like we got a quote from TK at twenty-five ninety-three. You have a quote from. BP. Yep. PRPC from six forty-five. Amounts are similar. I'm gonna assume the. Work is similar. Anybody got any wishes? Or do you wanna go forward with one of those two?
I'd like to move forward with one of them so we can get it finished. But I don't know even one, so I wouldn't, I wanna get it done because it's gonna look nice. Needs to be done.
Just reading. Have a personal spiritual, which one we move forward with? I know I talked to property restoration and told them what I wanted and how it was to be. I assume TK's the same, but I do not know that.
I don't know. I mean, property restoration doesn't have a. Any detail on here. I'm not sure on the comparison.
Yeah, we probably got the detail. I just printed out that one page. Um. And we have a motion to move forward.
I make a motion to move forward with one of the estimates.
And the.
Ending.
The.
Review.
The estimate, the, yeah, make sure they're comparisons. Um, and then it may just boil down to you can get it done the quickest.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. You're fine.
I will look and see.
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion made by Rachel, second by Doris. We'll go ahead and proceed with one of those two. Uh, with basis probably being data completion.
Mm-hmm.
Did I forward you Lori that? Okay, I'll look and see if I've got that detail.
I think when I got the estimate, I wasn't able to open it. On the PRPC. Yeah. I got the total, but I couldn't open the actual estimate.
Okay, we'll take a look at it and then I will. Uh, concrete repair department, you've talked to them about that. Duke Energy, we got a bill for two hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars versus a hundred and twenty-one thousand. It says in, it's an estimate. I've contacted, just FYI, I've sent an email. To Duke saying I'm not really pleased with the sixty-five percent increase with nobody telling us anything about it. They missed their estimate. Uh, they said that it's because it's been two years. And I said, I'm gonna need more detail. So I'm working, again FYI, I'm working with Duke. Uh, we're probably gonna end up paying it. Uh, probably need to pay it and try to. Welcome into discounts back or refunds. Coke contract, we still have water quality issues. Chris, was that on your list of things to look through? Coke contract? And if so, have you gotten, still on your list?
On my list, but I don't know that I know exactly, exactly, exactly what I'm looking for.
The, the exact, exactly is that they're sending us poor quality water.
Yeah.
When they send us poor quality water, it's barely. Coming in under governmental standards. It makes us have to treat it and put more chemicals in it to bring it down. If it sits in our tower for a couple of days, percolating or whatever it does up there. Again, it costs us money because we're not getting. A quality water product.
Yeah, look at it.
But I'm not sure what our.
Contract says.
What about that? I don't know what our options are.
Right.
Coke is it unless we start drilling wells. And I don't think we wanna do that. But we need to look at the contract, see if we've got any. Way of going back to them to. Try to get their quality up. Opioid, uh, we determined that that document is probably a scam. Right?
Yes, I did include that.
Taking care of everything.
I included that the reporting and was done in last month.
Credit cards for department heads. We now have those.
Hmm.
You're sitting here waiting for them to pick up, I assume. Oh. Have we made anybody notice that they're available?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. Was, uh. My, uh, the, the marshal.
Yeah.
Uh, he. Was out of town last week.
So he should be, you know, picking up here shortly so he can do whatever he's needing to do if he's still needing to do anything. Um. Ongoing budgeted street maintenance, just something that I wanna talk about. Yeah.
Policy says. Your policy says that. We're gonna talk about.
Oh. Yeah, you got your question. Ongoing, uh, budgeted street maintenance. I think I put that in there just to. Ask council to let me add some dollars to our budget as we're working on it for next year. Uh, we're spending an awful lot of money on streets. It would behoove us to. Keep the streets up. Which means when they start cracking a little bit, you know, asphalt is just like concrete, it will crack. That we put, we do some maintenance on those streets. It won't be a, a huge dollar amount, but we need to add that into the budgets.
Then Brian talked about oil that you could put.
I mean.
Yeah.
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 Are you talking outside of what we're already have set aside for roads and ditches?
Well, as far as I know, we've never done this before. So I don't know what we accounted for in those dollars that we've set aside. Obviously, if it can be. Done within the current budget. We're, we're, we're good to go.
Mm-hmm.
But if we need to look at that as a, a potential another thousand dollars or two thousand dollars, then we need to plan for that. I have no idea what it's gonna cost, but I just do know that we need to take care of our streets. And we get, we get, uh, we get money every year for that. So we may be recovered. Just some that's never been. Line item, I guess, before that I know of. Okay. Great study. We figured all that out. Apartment complex. Is there meter deposit issue? Is there anything we still need to do on that?
I did. I think I emailed you Chris in reference to the apartment complexes that were sold. And, uh, five one hundred dollar deposits were placed by the previous owner. They've since been sold and the way I read it in our ordinance, that that is a refundable deposit.
Right.
She was told when she was making the deposit that it was non-refundable. But it is refundable. So since both sets of the apartments have been sold and they no longer own any of them. Are we to ref, should we not be refunding those deposits? And then. I don't know how we go about. Seeking the new deposits. From the new owner. Uh, we haven't really discussed on how we're gonna process that.
For clarification, we're talking about water. Sewer.
Water meters.
Water meters.
It's refundable as long as they own the building, is what it says.
We need to refund them. That, that's, that's the old way. So we can do that. The question is, how do we get, that, that was a sticky wicked on who was going to pay the deposits.
On water.
On the new owner.
If the owner is willing to, we can't require the owners to pay them. We, that's the waters assigned that we. Have to. We are limited in what our ability to go after the owner is. That was what I said out there. You know, that's the law on water. On sewer, the owner is ultimately responsible. That you can assign it to the tenant. So. The tenant's really responsible. On water. We need to figure out how to make that change.
Okay, who needs to figure it out and how do we implement it? And then how do we notify?
I mean, I can help any more detail on exactly what happened, you know? I think it's in the owner's name now. Who do I work with you on that?
I can look it up, but Megan, I don't, I honestly don't know how it's listed.
I'll call Megan.
Yeah, I absolutely don't know how it's listed.
You.
Because we just need to make sure we've got it straight.
I'm sure they're waiting on paying.
And we made.
She has copies of where she paid the deposit. So she has copies of her receipts then.
Are we sending the bills out to the tenants now on water?
I think that's part of what we were trying to determine how it needed to go.
Yeah.
Well, I turned that in a month ago. Yeah.
Yeah, nothing has changed on that. It's still going to the tenants. Yeah.
Because I thought it hadn't changed. Go to the owner when that fella came in.
No, we never. We're waiting. I think she was waiting to see what you guys decided. So we'd always, it stayed going.
I'll, I'll work with Megan, make sure we get it squared back away.
Yep.
Megan doesn't have copies of receipts for any other people you have. So just.
I'm also gonna look at, because I know that your ordinance needs updated because it's got some things in it that when, it's kinda led to the issues that the ordinances were the old. Some of the old law. So I wonder if that cleaned up.
Okay. Let's get rid of that. Uh, I'm not sure what my past request status is, so I'll go pass that. Lindell Park Coke machine. I don't know if we've ever gotten an answer. Uh, I got, I got an answer from Wes telling me to stay out, but. I'm not happy with that. It's not his place to tell council questions that they can ask of the town's employees. My opinion. So if nothing's happened that I know of, I'm just making the board, the council.
I don't remember what the issue is. Is there, is there a new cup machine?
No, no. Um, apparently we didn't, it was undetermined who's been servicing the coke machine, who's been collecting the money on the coke machine. It's just out there.
I have called thirty people. I've talked to three humans. And one was in Atlanta. Uh, I do have the, um, number for us, like, you know. Under contract, the contract number. Um. They said, what they said, what, and I sent it to both council members that we didn't get a letter supposedly that was sent to the park. Stating that they were, Coca-Cola company was not wanna be responsible for the machines anymore. And that we should be waiting for a second letter and then decide either we take the machine out or we keep it. But they will not give me, they don't even have the information on who owns the machine, the last time that orders were placed. Who filled the machines and takes the money, how was the, you know, how everything was distributed. And I do have.
The, the town is not in. The town is not in receipt of any monies that we are aware of from any vendor company employee. We don't know where the profits are going.
And then I go back to two thousand two.
You went back three, uh,
Three years.
Three years.
So we've not paid an invoice to fill the machine.
It appears that we haven't paid it either. Right?
But it should sit there, plug in, but not.
Did it get anything in it?
Yep. They took out over a hundred dollars in cash or something.
What, what?
Yeah. I, I will send you a copy of what I asked.
When we put the machine in, it was up by the wreck building and then we put it down by the shelter house because people sit down there. And that's when, you know, they sit down there and have a drink and, and all this. And the park actually ordered what we wanted because, you know, there was some drinks that you wouldn't, you wouldn't have. So we've actually filled the machine. Again, this is back then and took the money and deposited it. And no one knows where the keys are, nothing anymore.
We don't have any record of deposits.
Yeah. But I mean, I called three employees from back then. They said this exact same thing. They would take the golf cart down there, go up, take the money and bring it in to, you know, they deposited. There's nothing else.
What, what? Just trying to figure out what it is. We're trying to figure out, but.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. I think I left, I gave twelve or thirteen questions.
I've got, uh, I've got the
To the employees.
Number. I've got the coke machine number. I've got the vendor's number. I've got the equipment number. I've talked to two people and they actually don't know what's going on. They can't even go in their computer and tell us everything.
I will forward you those questions, Chris, and, and the response I got back from.
And I can send you the letter that he sent me.
It's in your packet.
He's got a letter. Okay. Cause the first day we're gonna send him the letter and she said, I'll send it to you now is what she did. But she said, let's start watching for a second letter. And it was August twenty third, twenty twenty five. It was letters of transition.
Okay.
All right.
You don't work on that. We'll beat that dead horse.
Good luck.
Uh, I'm gonna get answers.
Yeah, send me.
I'm going to get answers.
I have a call with Wes Monday.
I will go set up a meeting with them.
I have a call with them Monday. I'm gonna talk to him Monday.
Yeah, he, he asked to have one set up with us. I told him that was a good idea and I haven't heard back. Okay. Uh, Chris. We got you down for farm ground lease advertisement update.
Right. I don't know if I, do I have a copy of the farm lease? I can't find it in my emails. Was it in a packet or something?
No, I gave you the file.
You gave it to me. Okay. So I have the farm lease. So yes.
I've sent you a copy of the farm lease.
Can't seem to find it. I just need to get, I mean, it won't, it doesn't take long to get it advertised. I just need to make sure I have the form so I can get it to Lori and we'll get it advertised. Yeah, right. Okay. It gets advert, I have a whole stack. It's a big old stack. Um, it gets advertised once. And then we'll take it. So it'll get, we'll get it done. We'll get it advertised this month.
Hey, Upper Feld Salt Storage update.
I found my file on the Upper Feld Salt. It's two thousand nineteen. I can hardly believe it's been that long. So this is what I know. I mean, they it's a county has the agreement that we're failed to build this building, the house salt. So it's really the county that we're gonna we'd want to deal with. It's suppose Bobby Howard is who we were dealing with to get the.
Ryan was gonna talk with somebody.
Bobby would be, I guess, Bobby or Dennis. And so.
I need to talk to Bobby about something else anyway. So.
So I think it would be Bobby. Bobby is who, the Oberfeld has. Yeah, it's the county basically storage and they've let, they have some of the salt for being able to use it, but it's the county salt.
Okay.
That's what I know. If you want me to do anything further, I can. That's.
I've asked Brian to look into it with him and to look into it with Boonville. And I'll talk with Bobby. So I think you've done your part.
Okay.
Building ordinances and inspection action. We had asked. Uh, and we have gone through several times addressed certain buildings. I don't know if anything has ever gone forward with any of that. I'm just bringing it up to see if that is a good issue or if we're going to continue moving forward with any of that.
With buildings.
Well, we had one, we had one that we actually had an inspector come in and take a look at.
Yeah, and we had the inspection, that one. We had the inspection.
I would not move forward with anything.
Right.
Or decide if we want to move forward with anything. I believe all council members have that copy of that inspection.
The inspection. Supposedly repair items. There wasn't. Didn't, he noted some minor structural things, but basically have a list of things that could be repaired. So it's a question of whether we want to, I mean, the first thing to do rather than issue an official code enforcement order might be just to send it to the owner and request the repairs to be made or the plan for the repairs. I don't know. It's up to you all how you want to proceed with that.
I'm not comfortable moving forward with one building when there are several buildings that need to be addressed. And I feel like if we are just moving forward, this one building that we could be, could appear that we are targeting that building, uh, when there are other buildings in worse shape. And that we haven't addressed, that we haven't had inspected. Uh, so I'm really not comfortable with just isolating this one.
Yeah, approach that was with this inspector. It was the first time we'd used him. So I I didn't do one as, as a pilot. And so, um, there's a list of other buildings that we could have that I have that we can have him inspect.
Would you like to move forward with having inspections on some buildings? And if so, which buildings? So we can either move or not move.
I have a list. I can send it to you all what I have. But I mean, if you want to give me a list, but I, what I, what I told him is we could give him the list of buildings and he could do the inspections, give me the reports, and then we can decide more uniformly what to do with all of them. As opposed to taking them one at a time. But I wanted to see what product we got from him and whether we was usable and whether, how he worked. I mean, I you met with him, David. I thought it worked. I thought it went fine. I could, he's open to suggestion to if we want something different.
Well, okay. He's just, he's not being hard-nosed on anything. He just wrote up what he saw.
Right.
Oh. But you know, if we got other, if we got other ones we need to do. I don't mind moving forward and having them done also, but I don't want to spend money having inspections done if we're not going to move forward with any of the results.
Well, we'd like to have all of, all of those buildings that we talked about inspected and bring them all up to the board and do something about it. We talk about it like, you know, I don't want to just pinpoint, just want, get them in there as a group, get it done.
You're talking for what? Two thousand dollars a building?
I don't think it was that.
Fifteen hundred dollars, somewhere in there, aren't they? I'm just going off what inspections used to call.
I don't think that's, I don't think it was that much at all.
Okay. I'll say five hundred dollars if we got.
I thought it was pretty reasonable. I'm sure I can find.
Move with ten of them? If we got more than ten.
Well, I'd like to see the list. I think we should prioritize the list.
Let me, um, let me look at.
Your, your list may be a little bit different than mine or David's, you know. Uh, we'll just start there. Let's start there. Let's get it done.
I mean.
Talked about this for years.
If there's a obvious crater in a roof where animals are inhabiting, then that tends to be at the top of my list, but.
But we got one of those.
Yeah.
Down around the corner. Uh, we got one over by the gymnasium. We got the one where the guy is moving out for whatever reason. That's, the house is not in really good shape. You know. I'm
I mean.
I want to move forward if we're going to move forward on these ordinances. And then we have to figure out who's going to enforce them.
I have a list. And it has everything that Mike didn't take on as far as the nuisance things. And I have a list and I can send you the list that I was. My next step would be to send those to him. You can look at it and you can say if there's any on them that you have questions about. I have a list. I have a list. And if it, or you can or, uh, you can add to it or give me other ideas, but, and I will.
Okay.
The idea was to get ki- kind of a arrangement with an inspector so that when we needed an inspection done, we had somebody to go take a look at it. Um, give us their thoughts, identify whether there's anything, you know, of significance or whatever, and then go from there.
I would like to, I would like for you to board the list because I know what I sent you.
Yep.
And I'm really not sure some of what Doris sent might be repetitive or it might, there might be something new. And that way we can see all of them together and then move forward.
So I'm gonna find out the town. It's to get those inspected and then put them up or put it down.
And I, I don't think, I also don't. I prefer with not to be seen as targeting anyone. I don't think there's anything wrong with a methodical approach, but if we can get, there were, you know, there were a handful of this, we can get those inspected. Get, get inspections, review them all, and then take action uniformly. That would be ideal. So.
Okay. So Chris, you're going to send that list that you've received from Mike that he received from us.
Yeah, I can't.
Back to us.
Yeah, it's a, we've got a spreadsheet.
Prioritize it. So I will ask the council members, once you get those, take a couple, three days. Take a look at it, send me your priorities. So I can compile that and send it back out to both of you and see if we can agree to our top ten hits. Or whatever it has to be.
Yeah.
And then we'll, we'll move on. Okay. Lori, or Chris, you have anything else?
Sure I do. Um, oh, on the, uh, the next step on, uh, so I talked in, in connection with looking at what I liked that and I sent you, I was talking with Steve Brock and was talking with Aaron. And so we need to move, we need to at least start to get the process moving towards the next project. And, uh, in order to move it along, we need to start looking at financing and a ban, bond anticipation note to cover engineering expense, et cetera. So if you're comfortable with us at least moving the ball forward on that. Aaron and me and Steve to bring it back to you to approve, but to get bond council involved in those kinds of things and you comfortable to do that.
You know how much dollars we're talking about? We're, we're gonna have to do it sooner or later. It's
Yeah, I think we need.
Do we do it now or do we wait till January?
I think we get that from Aaron. I mean, because Aaron. What we need, the, the, the bond anticipation note would cover basically engineering and other expenses that would come up between now and when you do the transaction. And, and so because you don't want to pay those out of your operating cash. So um, that requires getting a bond, bond council involved and doing a bond ordinance and approving some things so that you can have that financing. And, uh, we would need to get from Aaron kind of what his estimates are and other folks, their estimates. And then to that, whether you can cover those in your temporarily in your reserves pending getting it done, but I would be careful about that. And then Steve will work. He'll send you another engagement letter that covers the next phase, which will be include, uh, and we'll all work towards getting RD funding or whatever funding we can get, try to bring the make sure that the, bring the costs down to the ratepayers and all of that. But we need to get kind of moving. I just want to make sure.
I'm gonna have Aaron make her proposal the next council meeting.
Okay.
And then, and then we can decide based off of that, if we want to move quickly forward or slowly forward.
Okay.
But we do need to move forward.
Yep.
Anything else from council?
Yeah. That's why I don't know. Inspection was two hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Yeah.
So.
That's nothing.
No.
So if you just say three hundred dollars, pick ten, ten homes or three thousand dollars. Registered for my budgets that I'm gonna have to work there. Okay. Thank you. Lauren. Nothing. Rachel.
Nothing.
Nothing. Nothing?
Nothing.
Rachel.
She's going on vacation. She happens to be there.
Yours. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Only thing I have is some, uh, thanks Rachel and then the one, the work that you did for the venue on Saturday. It was so fun and everybody had a good time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for helping out too.
For your work.
Boys, use an extra set of hands. So one more to go.
It's all right.
Okay. I have nothing else to add. Business from the floor.
Oh.
It's limited to two minutes. Well, yeah.
I wouldn't even want to say anything, but.
State your name.
Ray Wallace. I guess basically just what he said, are we gonna do another bond? Does that mean our taxes are gonna go up again? For whatever the next project she was just talking about. We don't, we don't know that yet. And then there's a project that needs to happen and that's the next phase. So we'll work, start working on that. But there's exploring other funding opportunities that grants, et cetera, that may not.
It's a utility project.
We have, uh, let's say, not more.
No.
No.
No, that's, it's a sewer project.
Right, Brian.
And, and hopefully we qualify for grades of, of some else. That's what I just, that's what we're saying.
Yeah.
Bonds and stuff like that, because that's what we said the last time was, our taxes went up because of bonds. Right. These, this, this quickly. So we have the Coke machine out at the park that nobody knows who's filling up or nobody knows who's, it belongs to or really. I mean, it's not like it's going out there. Yeah, yeah. Something like, they, they, they always don't ever see anybody going out there.
I think it's like some three hours of David's life out of him last week of investigation and we got nothing.
Maybe, maybe it's your, maybe it's your brother and he's running it.
Brother had a Coke machine, but he was worried that somebody's gonna jump over on it.
It, it, it's one of these weird things that doggone, I asked a question.
Yeah.
And that question is just going and going and going. And we will get to the bottom of it.
No one knows.
We will.
You know, by just going pull the plug and
I see that Coke machine and say.
We don't know it long.
So it's been there for that long. What's the price of the Coke? Like twenty-five cents? Two dollars. And so somebody, I looked at that, two dollars. So somebody, so somebody's kept it fairly.
So I can tell you that I'm aware of situations.
There's money in, there was money in the machine after I was told they didn't have a key to the machine. They had a key and they went out there and opened it up.
So.
We're gonna find, we're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna figure it out. Come, come in the next board meeting and.
You're invested now, right?
Grab that Coke machine and put it in a building somewhere. Cause it's out on Park Stop reuse and Park Electric.
We've talked, we've talked about.
Somebody will show up and say, hey, where's my Coke machine and get the bottom of it.
Yeah, we've talked about it.
Yeah.
But. Okay.
They don't know where it's.
Nothing else?
No, no.
I've cut you off. I'm, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn people.
Okay.
So made by, uh, source seconded by Rachel on favor.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned seven eleven P M. Thank you all. Three hours.